Good evening and welcome to the Anaheim Planning Commission meeting of December 1st, 2025. My name is Christopher Walker and I am Chairman of the Anaheim Planning Commission. As a reminder, Planning Commission meetings are broadcast on all channels, including online and Anaheim TV Channel 3. First order of business is to salute our flag. Commissioner Castro will lead us in the flag salute.
Please stand able and place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, I will ask the Planning Commission Secretary to take a verbal roll call. Vote of all Planning Commissioners.
Chair Walker.
Present.
Vice Chair Tran Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman.
Here.
Commissioner Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Castro.
Here.
Commissioner Abdul Rahman.
Present.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you would all please silence your electronic communication devices so that they don't disrupt the proceeding, we would appreciate that. The doors at the back of the room are automatic. They open when you get close to them and they don't close until after you walk down the hall. Please move away from the automatic doors after you go through them so that they will close. Today, we have three public hearing items on our agenda. I would ask members of the public who wish to speak on any of those three items to please complete a yellow speaker card. Those speaker cards are located on the table at the entrance and give them to staff after you fill them out. Please note that public comments are limited to three minutes. We ask that you keep your remarks as brief as you can. We are influenced more by the content than the length of your presentations. First, we provide an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, prior to beginning the public hearing, I will ask the Planning Commissioners for any disclosures they wish to make regarding the public hearing items on today's agenda. Well, I know I met with item three, the people, and got a presentation, so.
I also met with the applicant for item three.
Item three as well.
Same here for item three.
Item three as well.
Item three as well.
And I have as well.
Okay. Please note that the actions taken by the Planning Commission tonight will be final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk. The appeal deadline is Thursday, December 11th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. Appeal forms and information are on the city clerk's webpage. Please note that public hearing item two is not appealable as the city council is the final decision-maker body for this item. I will now begin the public hearing and ask the presentation staff to present item one.
Good evening, Chair Walker and Planning Commissioners. I'm Grace Cho, senior planner, and will be presenting the first item on the agenda this evening. Case number DEV 2025-0039 involves a request for a conditional use permit to permit a fitness studio use and administrative adjustment for fewer parking spaces than required by code for OCB Athletics. The project site is located at 1940 West Corporate Way within an existing industrial office complex known as the Crescent Corporate Center. Both the zoning and land use designation for the property is industrial. The parcel is approximately 2.84 acres in size and developed with a single-story industrial building. OCB Athletics would occupy one of the four tenant spaces in the building. The subject tenant space is outlined in the dashed yellow line, and the space is currently vacant and was previously occupied by a cabinetry business. Surrounding land uses include an adult daycare and industrial uses to the north, educational institution to the north and east, single-family residential to the south, and multifamily residential to the west. The applicant is Orange County Bat Busters, a girls' fast pitch softball organization. I'll refer to them as OCB. OCB has been operating a training facility in Anaheim with a CUP near the stadium since 2017 and are in need of relocating. The proposed fitness studio would operate in a similar fashion here on Corporate Way with personalized training for softball athletes ages 10 to 18. OCB's personalized training sessions are by appointment and are limited to small groups or private sessions. Training sessions do not involve parent involvement or participation, and this specialized facility is not open to the general public. Given the school-age clientele, the facility would operate during after-school hours from 3:00 to 10:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 3:00 to 8:00 PM on Fridays, and on Saturdays, they would be as needed based on conditions, say, poor field conditions or game cancellations. And on Saturday, those as-needed hours would be from 9:00 to noon. The facility would be closed on Sundays. Based on the scheduling, the busiest times for the fitness studio would be from 5:00 to 8:00 PM and would have a peak occupancy of 50 persons in the building at any given time. To accommodate the use, the applicant would submit improvements for the floor plan shown on the screen. This tenant space is approximately 15,700 square feet, and the front third of the space would be designed with office, support areas, and a gym space. Office areas and the reception area are shaded in yellow. Storage and support areas are shaded in gray, and they include the restrooms, a break room, equipment storage, and a display room. The gym space in blue would have equipment for strength conditioning. The remainder of the space highlighted in green would be dedicated for the specialized training of technical softball skills in hitting, fielding, and catching. The applicant is also requesting an administrative adjustment for a 6% reduction in the parking for the project site. Parking requirements are established by the totality of uses on the property, and this table identifies the fitness studio and existing tenancies. The number of required spaces by code would be 147 spaces. However, based on OCB's staffing and appointments, the fitness studio would have a peak occupancy of 50 people at its busiest times. Based on the proposed operations and those characteristics, the strict application of requiring 63 required parking spaces for the fitness studio would be excessive, given the number of vehicles expected on the site at any given time. Of note, a significant number of the participants are not of driving age and are driven to and from their sessions, so applying 50 spaces is also a conservative parking assumption. As such, 134 parking spaces would be adequate for all uses on the property, and the site sufficiently provides for 138. A condition of approval that limits the fitness studio to a 50-person occupancy has been included to ensure that the parking needs for the fitness studio would not impact the surrounding uses and the parking for the entirety of the property. On the screen are a few images of the exterior of the property on the left-hand side, the front entrance and the rear of the building, and on the right-hand side is the existing conditions of the interior space in which would need to be improved for the office, gym, and training areas. The item was noticed as required by code, and staff did not receive any public comments. Staff has evaluated the proposal and found that the requested fitness studio use meets all required CUP and administrative adjustment findings for parking. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine that a Class 1 existing facility's categorical exemption is the appropriate environmental determination and that the site can appropriately accommodate the proposed use and would not result in any adverse effects. As such, staff supports the request and recommends approval of the application subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff and the applicant, Coach Mike Stith from OCB, is available to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing and invite the applicant forward in case you have a presentation or in case the possibility that one other commissioner might have questions.
Thanks for having me. No, sir. We have nothing else to add to the presentation other than we've been here for 17 years, so we'd like to continue, grow in a different facility, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that come up, staff or.
Yeah, thank you. I saw your prior stuff, so I figured you were just outgrowing where you are. Anyone have questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. No cards? Okay. There appear to be nobody that wants to talk on this item. Is there anybody who would like to talk on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And any discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And I just want to say this company, this company's got an amazing track record for what they do, and I'm glad they've decided to remain in Anaheim.
Very good.
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Good luck, sir. Hello, how are you guys doing?
Good evening, Chair Walker and members of the commission. I'm Amanda Law for the project planner. Item number two is a request for a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and administrative adjustment to allow for an increase in density and reduction in code required parking spaces for the existing Wyndham Hotel located at 515 West Cotella Avenue in the Anaheim Resort. The project site is a .97-acre site and is currently developed with a four-story hotel known as the Wyndham Hotel. The site is located within the commercial recreation district of the Anaheim Resort Specific Plan, or ARSP, and is within the low-medium density category. The general plan designates the project site for commercial recreation land use, and surrounding land uses include existing hotels to the east and south across Cotella Avenue, commercial uses to the west, and a vacant parcel, and additional hotels to the north. The Wyndham Hotel was originally approved by the city in 1995 and included 72 suite-type rooms, some of which included separate bedroom and living room areas and two bathrooms, as shown on the left. At some point in time after the original construction, additional external doors were added and internal connecting doors were closed, thereby creating additional individually keyed hotel rooms, as shown on the right. Lastly, two larger executive suites were modified into managers' units. However, the code allows for one manager's unit for hotels within the ARSP, and therefore the applicant proposes to revert one of these manager units back to a standard keyed hotel room. These modifications result in a total of 107 keyed rooms. Additional modifications were made on the first floor to convert previous guest lobby space, offices, and storage areas into a restaurant and meeting and conference rooms that are open to the general public. These areas total 6,394 square feet. The hotel has been operating with the additional keyed rooms and accessory areas for a number of years. The city became aware of these modifications after a TOT audit was conducted for the hotel. The building footprint, overall square footage, site access, and onsite parking did not change from the previously approved condition and would remain as is. No new construction is proposed as part of this request. However, the applicant will be required to obtain building permits for the unpermitted In order to retain the additional hotel rooms and accessory uses, the applicant requests a general plan amendment to update table LU-4 in the land use element and create a new density category called medium density modified B, a specific plan amendment that would update exhibits and text in the ARSP and Chapter 18.116 of the municipal code to reflect the new medium density modified B category, and an administrative adjustment for a 28% reduction in the number of code-required parking spaces. The general plan designates the project site for commercial recreation land use, and the site is within the Anaheim Resort Specific Plan. Both documents include provisions that limit the development intensity of the site to 75 rooms per acre or parcel, whichever is greater. The code states that accessory uses not identified as strictly for the use of hotel guests or employees shall reduce the otherwise maximum permitted hotel density at a rate of one hotel room per 600 square feet of gross accessory use. Based on this requirement, the existing accessory uses open to the public, the proposed project would result in a total density of 118 hotel-equivalent rooms. Supplemental EIR number 340 reevaluated all of the environmental changes that occurred in and around the Anaheim Resort since the certification of the original EIR number 313. Since supplemental EIR number 340 was certified, the project site was 1.04 acres, which allowed for a maximum of 78 rooms for the project site. In order to permit and retain the additional rooms and accessory uses, the applicant is requesting approval of a new density category for the project site. Table LU-4 of the general plan would be modified to include this new medium density modified B category, which would permit a maximum density of up to 107 rooms and 6,394 square feet of accessory uses. The proposed amendment to the general plan maintains the internal consistency of the plan since there is no proposed plan since there is no proposed change in land use. It is also consistent with the general plan designations of the surrounding properties. Similar to the general plan amendment, the amendment to the Anaheim Resort Specific Plan would create the medium density modified B category to accommodate the existing hotel condition. This amendment would update exhibits and text within the specific plan document and relevant code chapter 18.116 to reflect the new density category. The proposed amendment would not change the boundaries of the existing specific plan or make any changes to the development standards that implement this designation. The amendment maintains and contributes to the balance of land uses within the city by encouraging tourists and entertainment-related industries in an area of the city specifically designed for this type of development. All potential environmental impacts associated with the proposed project and the increase in density were analyzed in the environmental document for the project. Lastly, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the number of parking spaces required by the code. Based on the increase of hotel rooms and accessory uses, a total of 137 spaces are required, but only 98 spaces are provided onsite. This is a 28% reduction from the code-required spaces. The code permits a deviation of up to 50% from the code-required parking for hotels within the resort area through an administrative adjustment if designated loading spaces are provided for transportation network company vehicles such as Uber and Lyft. The hotel provides loading spaces in the surface parking area next to the hotel entrance. Also, the applicant conducted a parking survey during a weekend and over a week, during a weekday and over a weekend between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The table on this slide summarizes the total number of spaces that were occupied during the survey period, with a maximum of 79 occupied spaces at 10:00 PM on Saturday, which is 19 spaces less than onsite parking spaces are available. Since the parking survey was conducted when the hotel was already operating with the increase in hotel rooms and accessory uses under normal conditions, it reflects the true parking demand for the project. It should also be noted that staff has not received any complaints regarding parking from the surrounding business owners. A condition of approval is included in the draft resolution that would require parking mitigation measures, such as the introduction of valet parking or off-site parking, should the planning director determine that onsite parking is no longer sufficient. An initial study has been prepared to evaluate the environmental impacts of the project and to identify necessary mitigation measures. The initial study determined that a mitigated negative declaration could be prepared for the project. Collectively, these documents are referred to as the ISMND. The ISMND was circulated to public agencies and interested parties for a 20-day comment period. Staff received one comment letter during that period from the city of Garden Grove, which provided informational references to the resort sewer deficiency areas and did not warrant a formal response or recirculation of the ISMND. The city established the density limitations for the Anaheim Resort largely in consideration of infrastructure capacity. The modifications to the hotel did not add any new bathroom fixtures as the original suite layout included two rooms and two bathrooms. The initial study prepared to support the proposed mitigated negative declaration for the project analyzed the effects of the increased room density on the project and concluded that the infrastructure capacity is sufficient to accommodate the proposed density increase. Mitigation measures from previously certified EIR number 313 and supplemental EIR number 340 for the ARSP have been included in the mitigation monitoring program for the project. With the implementation of these measures, project impacts were determined to be less than significant. The proposed project is consistent with the goals and policies of the Anaheim Resort Specific Plan by maintaining additional accommodation options for visitors of the resort area. The project would allow for an increase in hotel density and accessory uses for the existing hotel, which has been operating with the request increase in density for several years. The additional density can be accommodated through existing infrastructure, and therefore staff recommends approval of the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, and administrative adjustment for the Wyndham Hotel. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward. Hello, sir. Any presentation you want to make?
Yes. Hey, good morning, commissioners. My name is Kenneth Pang. I'm with the CDAPDG with the architects, helping the ownership of this property to get this filed and moved through entitlement. Thank you so much for your time tonight, and also thank you, staff, for the wonderful presentation. We don't really have anything to add. I think Amanda's touched base on all the major items, but we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comment cards? Okay. Does anyone want to make a statement on this? Or... Very good. I'm going to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Comments? Shall we vote?
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Whenever you're ready, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Walker and members of the planning commission. My name is Stacy Tran, senior planner. I'm joined by Elaine Ten Presidi, principal planner. The item before you tonight is a request for a final site plan for the South Plaza Development located at 2625, 2725 East Cotella Avenue to create a mixed-use sports and entertainment district featuring music, restaurants, and hospitality use within OC Vibe. Other associated requests include a minor amendment to the OC Vibe master site plan, a minor conditional use permit for an electronic message board, a minor amendment to the OC Vibe coordinated sign program and mural plan, an administrative adjustment for hotel parking, and finally, a landscape variance along Cotella Avenue. The 4.5-acre project site is outlined in red, which is located within the OC Vibe master site plan. To date, there have been a total of six approved final site plans, which are outlined in green, with the most recent one for parking deck A approved at the last planning commission meeting. One other final site plan outlined in brown is currently under review by staff and will be presented at a future meeting. The project is located at the northwest corner of Cotella Avenue and River Road outlined in red on the south and east sides of the Honda Center, which is currently used as a parking lot. Surrounding land uses include the parking deck D to the north, Santa Ana River to the east, future Meadow Park, existing Arctic to the south, and the Paseo Market and Concert Halls to the west. The project would serve as a key activation hub linking the Honda Center, Arctic, the Paseo, and future housing. The final site plan for South Plaza includes new entertainment venues, a 320-room hotel, and public outdoor spaces with completion targeted by the 2028 LA Olympics. The project encompasses the South Plaza lot, 2625 East Cotella Building, the Arena Hotel, and the East Garden, which I will go through briefly in the next few slides. Major aspects of each component are listed above on this slide. The hickler access serving the hotel would enter from Cotella Avenue and exit onto River Road, shown in the blue arrows. Pedestrians can enter South Plaza at the location shown at the yellow stars, which would be from Cotella at the bridge access entrance and the Paseo from the south, or on River Road through the East Garden. The applicant is requesting minor amendments to the approved OC Vibe master site plan to reflect the entertainment uses and building footprint changes proposed for South Plaza. Various sheets within the approved master site plan would be updated to reflect the specific components of the final site plan. The South Plaza lot would be the main activation area, providing connections to multi-level public spaces, dining, entertainment, and event areas. It includes restaurants, outdoor seating, restrooms, shade structures, landscaping, digital displays, and a broadcast platform to support watch parties and live programming. The plaza provides pedestrian connections to the upper level to access the future Cotella pedestrian bridge, Arena Hotel, the 2625 East Cotella Building, East Garden, Meadow Park, and Arctic. The pedestrian bridge is not a component of this request, as it is subject to review and approval by the Public Works Director and the Planning and Building Director. The 2625 East Cotella Building will feature entertainment uses anchored by the Golden Bear Music Venue at the ground level at Cotella Avenue and the Paseo. An adjoining bar, Mama Bear, will operate with the venue and independently during non-event hours. The venue would host live entertainment for up to 500 guests operating from 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM. Additional ground-floor restaurants will provide covered outdoor dining. The Arts Garden Terrace will provide a landscaped, upper-level outdoor space with seating, lighting, and art installations functioning as a public amenity or private event space. Arena Hotel is a 16-story, 320-room hotel located at the corner of Cotella Avenue and River Road, offering a pool deck, penthouse suites, dining, and event spaces. Parking would be 100% valet within a three-level parking garage consisting of two podium levels and one subterranean level. Valet parking operations was previously approved for OC Vibe and will be implemented with the hotel. A hotel valet operations plan was submitted that determined the valet services would not have a negative impact on adjacent streets. The ground level of the garage would accommodate all guest-loading and unloading activities, including valet services, transportation network company vehicles, and Anaheim Transportation Network buses. Vehicles will enter the parking garage from Cotella Avenue and exit onto River Road. The hotel design consists of contrasting architecture with a solid podium of textured panels and a light reflective glass tower. The east and west elevations feature accent lighting and colored fins to create visual interest. The East Garden is a passive publicly accessible space along River Road north of the hotel featuring landscaped berms, tiered seating, movable lounge furniture, and shaded trees. It provides an intimate area and a pedestrian promenade connecting River Road to Honda Center and South Plaza. The applicant is requesting approval for a double-sided electronic message board at the Golden Bear Music Venue. The electronic portion is permitted, subject to approval of a minor conditional use permit, and is intended solely to display event information and showtimes for Golden Bear performances like a marquee sign. The sign features a static tenant identification on top, which is outlined in orange, and an electronic message board below, outlined in purple, totaling 22 feet in height and over 600 square feet. The sign is architecturally integrated, properly scaled, elevated for safety, and located within a high-activity entertainment district. Therefore, staff is in support of this request. The applicant is requesting to amend the OC Vibe coordinated sign program to update advertising, identity, and wayfinding signage. The amendment reflects changes in building footprints, sign locations, quantities, and sizes within South Plaza. Signage includes tenant signs, building addresses, and pedestrian and vehicle wayfinding signage. The updates remain consistent with the original approvals. Therefore, staff supports this request. A modification to the OC Vibe mural plan is requested to reflect changes in the location and size of previously approved murals. The modification would allow the replacement of three approved murals with the Golden Bear mosaic facade as a wall mural that would be 6,300 square feet in area, and the addition of a utility box mural on Cotella Avenue. The updates remain consistent with the original approvals. Therefore, staff supports this request. The applicant is requesting an administrative adjustment to allow a 48% reduction in parking for the Arena Hotel. The code permits up to a 50% reduction for hotels when dedicated transportation network company vehicle parking and loading is provided. The Arena Hotel includes the designated spaces shown in red, along with accommodations for Anaheim Transportation Network bus pickup and drop-off as well. A total of 199 parking spaces will be provided, ensuring adequate parking for hotel guests and event attendees. The requested reduction also reflects valet operations and the use of shared district parking for retail, restaurant, and outdoor dining areas accessible from South Plaza for uses that are not restricted to hotel guests. Valet operations will ensure onsite parking is managed efficiently. Therefore, staff supports this request. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow fewer trees on Cotella Avenue. The code requires trees to be planted at 20-foot intervals within the private setback along all street frontages. The Cotella Avenue frontage would require 23 trees to be planted. The project proposes six trees within the setback area. Unique site circumstances exist along Cotella Avenue, which is constrained by the future pedestrian bridge, driveway sightlines, utility locations, and the Golden Bear mural, limiting tree placement and spacing. While six trees are proposed within the private setback, additional landscaping, including 12 parkway trees, existing date palms, and upper-level terraces with greenery, would create a layered and visually enhanced streetscape that compensates for the reduced trees. Therefore, staff request... Therefore, staff supports this request. Environmental Impact Report number 339 was approved in 2010, increasing the allowable development intensities in the Platinum Triangle. The OC Vibe project was approved in 2022 with addendum number 11 and subsequently amended in 2024 with addendum number 13 to the EIR. Staff recommends the planning commission find that previously certified environmental impact report 339 and associated addenda are the appropriate environmental documentation for this request. The proposed development is a carefully designed and planned project that continues to implement the OC Vibe master site plan. The project conforms to the Platinum Triangle mixed-use overlay zone and would be an enhancement to the Platinum Triangle area. The development provides a well-designed mix of public gathering spaces, restaurants, entertainment uses, and hotel facilities that enhance connectivity within the district. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request. This concludes the presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions. The applicant and their team are also available to answer questions from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. Anyone have questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if the applicant wants to come forward.
Thank you, Chair Walker and members of the commission. My name is Brian Myers. I represent OC Vibe. Actually, I've been working on the project now for eight years, since we started this project well before COVID and actually went into a little bit of hibernation at that time to invent what you're starting to see today. I've been through a lot with the city staff and the community. It's really been an amazing experience. As the staff just talked about, we took the original master plan through in 2022, built up a really fabulous connection with the community and the local residents at that time, with over 60 outreach events that we did at that time, and we continued outreach to the community. I just want you to know that that's a commitment we've made since the start, even though this is an implementation of the project that's been really important to us. So in 2022, we took the master plan through and got unanimous support from your commission as well as from the council, and support from the community at that time. And really, we felt at that time that was a collaborative effort between us and the staff and the community at that time, coming up with a collaborative vision that we've been implementing now. So we're in front of you. Now, we did do an amendment to that master plan in 2024, which, if you remember, where we added to a residential district and really to make more of a neighborhood at that time. And you will be seeing the first phase of that residential coming before you with an FSP here in a couple weeks. So a lot of exciting things happening. This is really our high-energy district at the South Plaza. This is the main entry into the Honda Center. You're probably aware of the fact, because I know it's been talked about a lot publicly, and we're actually starting construction, of investing $1 billion in and around the Honda Center that comes alongside of this. And the front door is the main experience. And the front door is the main experience, and we're doing that with anticipation of the 2028 Olympics. And this South Plaza is really going to accentuate embrace those improvements. So, it is our high-energy area, different from the Urban Park, which is the other plaza, which is meant to be more passive and park-like, different from what we're going to do on the north, which is going to be embracing the residential district in a transition. So, we're hoping that if you come out of the Honda Center as a visitor, or if you're just surrounding the Honda Center, you will see very different experiences. I think you would agree if you saw this plan, which I know you have, but when you look at this plan, it is a very different experience. It is, again, high-energy with a lot of screens and high-energy entertainment, including the Golden Bear, which we're very excited about, because that really does represent the roots and soul of contemporary music in Orange County. It's so exciting to bring that back with a small music club and all the memorability that comes with it, and of course, embracing it with art and the mosaic that you saw in the presentation is a very important component for us. We're also going to be complementing that with restaurants and a sports bar and our first hotel. So, I do want to address the hotel, that part of our strategy for the hotel is that we're building a restaurant that sits on the plaza, that frankly can act independently or be part of the hotel guest experience. We are parking it separately, if you saw in the parking analysis, in the parking garages, so we accommodated for parking there, because we recognize, and we actually would encourage, people that aren't staying at the hotel to come to that restaurant as well. The reason we're doing that is we don't want to just do another hotel/restaurant. Not that that's a bad thing, but they tend to dilute a little bit to the customer experience around it, because they're catering to the hotel guest alone. So, that's intentional. We understood that it comes with a little bit of a price for us, that we then have to park it and support the services aside from the hotel, but I think that's important to make it sure that it feels like it integrates into the plaza. We also saw, as you saw in the presentation, a really deep commitment to the arts, all being done through the philanthropy of the Samhain Foundation, by the way. That's an overlay for an arts master plan. It's not regulated, but I hope you'll enjoy the experiences you're starting to see already, because we think the arts and cultural experience is just as important as anything else we're providing at OC Vibe. Entertainment is one thing, restaurants are another thing, music, that's all great, but the arts are really part of the soul of culture of the place. And so, this will have an arts terrace, as well as complimentary art, and arts that are going to celebrate actually the hockey team and the plaza itself, which I think you'll find to be quite a fun experience, because we want to celebrate the team itself, which is doing very well, by the way, right now. So, I'll make those remarks kind of the brief statement for you and be available for any questions, but we thank you for support, and we'd ask for your vote for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Very good. Cards? No? Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
Very good. Discussions, comments?
Seven yes votes, the motion carries.
You ready, Scott?
Before Scott provides the meeting forecast, just a final reminder that the Ethics and Brown Act training is tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. today, and if you have not contacted the city clerk about your attendance, please do so before the training. Correct.
For the next planning commission on December 15th, we have a final site plan for the residential component of OC Vibe. We have an amendment to a conditional use permit for Brewery X to expand their brewing operations, their tasting room area. We have a conditional use permit request for a new Porsche dealership and a parking variance request for the Bank of America Building here on Harbor. No items have been scheduled for the December 29th Planning Commission meeting. We don't have anything that is ready to go at that point, so we will have a cancellation request at the end of the December 15th agenda. And provided that no items need to be continued, then we would ask for a cancellation of that meeting. Upcoming at City Council on the December 16th meeting, we have the annual Coda update and the Anaheim Hills Festival that you recently saw, and those are all the updates I have for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any more comments? We're adjourned.